Deb Cohen, Eric Range was able to join us for the executive session but had to drop out due to a commitment to a business commitment. And I know this is, we had a little break, but it's still a tough time in the year to get everyone together. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing after the pledge.
My Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America, a new republic with which stands one nation, under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
Just want to take a moment to remember a few longtime Madison residents we've lost over the past month. One very special person, Fran Piano. Lifelong Madison resident, passed away at Sunrise Living on Friday, June 24th. She was 99, one month short of her 100th birthday. She was born right here in Madison, July 30th, 1922, to the late Angelo and Adeline Eulsa. She was raised with her five siblings. She married her husband Ralph Piano on June 23rd, 1946, and the couple remained in Madison to raise her family. Fran was a lifelong devout Catholic, very patriotic woman who was extremely proud of the honorable service to the country that her husband and son served. She was a Gold Star Mother, a member of the American Legion Women's Auxiliary in Florham Park. As many remember, she read the names of the deceased military men from Madison, including her son Ralph Piano Jr. at the annual Memorial Day Parade. He was killed in fighting for our country during the Vietnam War. In addition to her son Ralph, Fran was predeceased by her husband Ralph Senior in 2003. She was survived by her son and retired borough employee Michael Piano and his wife Mara and her grandson Brian. Also, let us remember Filomena Lepore, longtime Madison resident, passed away peacefully on June 24th. She was 80. Born in Naples, Italy in 1941, at the age 14, she emigrated to the United States, settling right here in Madison. Married her husband, the late Albert Lepore, in 1962. She also a devout Catholic, lifelong parishioner of St. Vincent Martyr Church. She was predeceased by her husband Albert. She survived by her children, Anna Marie Giovanni, Anthony, Carmella, Albert, her spouses, and eight grandchildren, and her three great-grandchildren. And just today, we learned word, we received word that Lorraine Solu, longtime zoning board secretary, died over the weekend. Visitation is this Friday at Roser Cor and Dangler from 2:00 to 4:00 and 7:00 to 9:00. The obituary will be posted on their site. So let's take a moment to remember Fran Piano, Filomena Lepore, and Lorraine Solu. And let us pass our thoughts on to the families and friends they leave behind. Thank you. Let me have a motion for the executive minutes of May 9th, May 23rd, and June 13th.
So moved.
Second.
These were already been discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. And a motion for the May 9th meeting minutes of June, of May 9th of 2022 minutes, regular minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for the May 23rd minutes, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And June 13th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome. It appears the heatwave has broken. But just in case it was a little warm, I did not wear my jacket tonight. Summer attire. And it has been a while since our last meeting, but rest assured, I will not cover everything that has happened over the past month since that meeting, so I'll just want to touch base on a few things. One, this past Thursday, I was joined by council members Hoover, Cohen, and Range, and also joined by Governor Phil Murphy for ribbon cutting at Anywhere Real Estate, which was formerly Realogy. And it was one of the things I, comment I made to the CEO that when I was at the groundbreaking 11 years ago, I had to look up Realogy on Google to learn how to pronounce it properly. I did not have to look up anywhere. They have not only rebranded their identity, but also the work environment having adapted to the new world of remote working. They still have an office presence in Madison, but the employees are using the building on Park Avenue as a base only and working remotely. Building had been fully occupied by Realogy, and now in its new identity is Anywhere, they are now using one floor while leasing out the other two floors. But it's great to see the recommitment to Madison. And certainly, since our last meeting, Drew University took action to challenge our affordable housing settlement with Fair Share Housing Center. This was a settlement, as many residents know, took several years of work, produced an outcome that continues to have Madison lead the way in providing quality housing for those in economic need. First and foremost, it was disappointing to see Drew take this action for several reasons. One, it was sad to hear that years of deficit had put Drew University in a dire position that hadn't been selling properties. Over the past few years, Drew has sold Greenville apartment complex, lost from St. Vincent's, homes on Luanica Way, Woodcliff Drive, lots along Madison Avenue and Luanica Terrace, and administrative building adjacent to the campus. Madison has been nothing but supportive of their effort. This was clear with the recent rezoning of Copper Beach condos, which sold for 8.75 million in December. This property had zoning restrictions greatly limiting its value. Madison moved quickly in responding to Drew's request. Secondly, it's an ill-informed attack on Madison's longtime commitment to affordable housing. I have often said that Madison is committed to providing affordable housing as a moral, not a legal obligation. The Madison Housing Authority is one of only three suburban-based authorities in the state, and it just celebrated its 50th anniversary, a longtime commitment. One only has to look at the quality scattered site housing, which is blended into our neighborhoods to understand our commitment. Recently, the planning board approved a 25% inclusionary housing project for the Madison Mall Apartments, clearly showing that our settlement strategies were a commitment to be delivered on. This fall, we'll be breaking ground on construction of the first 100% passive affordable housing construction project in the state, right here in the core of our town. Thirdly, is a statement that we acted in bad faith. As I already mentioned, the borough took many steps to help Drew recover from the many years of deficit budgets. There's multiple reasons why Madison has been recognized as the number-one place to live in New Jersey. Drew University is certainly one of them. The cultural opportunities, the economic impact are just part of what Drew provides our community. To paraphrase, the previous Drew president, Governor Tom Kean, since its founding, Drew University are perfect together. We have been a partner with Drew to the point that I was recognized with an honorary degree based on our excellent community relationship. We are committed to continuing to support Drew during these difficult times. One other area regarding Drew's filing, Drew stated that Madison missed a deadline for filing for Morris County Open Space Grant. The deadline to file was last month, and the number-one requirement is to have a purchase agreement in place. An agreement has to include the sale price backed up with appraisals. With this deadline in mind, I had convened a meeting with Drew Administration Board Leadership back in February, but Drew was not able to meet those requirements. They were very well aware at the time that the next funding cycle would be 2023. This is a difficult time for Madison and Drew University, but for the greater good, we cannot take the recent action personally. Next month, we will have our hearing to support what was and is a great settlement to provide affordable housing in our community. When we get past this hurdle, we will get back on track, supporting Drew University while doing the best we can do for all of Madison. I just want to share that update. And a few other updates. Employees for the month of July, Patrolman Michael Clancy, Sergeant James Guevezza, firefighter EMTs Brian Castano and Troy Poholak have been chosen as the employees of the month of July. In early June, a 51-year-old jogger collapsed and went into cardiac arrest. His workout coach and cardiac nurse, who was driving by, began life-saving measures. Patrolman Clancy followed shortly by Sergeant, misprint here, sorry. Patrolman Clancy, who is followed shortly by Sergeant Guevezza, arrived at the scene and continued compressions. After firefighters Castano and Poholak arrived and used oxygen and their defibrillator, the patient regained pulse and started breathing on his own. The ambulance squad transported the patient to the hospital where he was treated and released. Thanks to everyone involved, there was a positive outcome. An anniversary for month of July is Officer Matthew Marabella, police department celebrating his 20th anniversary back on July 1. And we will now go to reports for committees, and I'm not too sure who's covering what for members that are not here, so I will call in the usual order and cover your report and any others you may be covering. Councilwoman Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, from June 1st to today, the Fire Department has responded to 175 calls for assistance. They include, on Saturday, July 2nd, the Fire Department responded to a pedestrian that was struck by a vehicle and injured near 45 Main. On Wednesday, July 13th, at 10:51 a.m., the Fire Department rescued occupants that were trapped in a stalled elevator at 17 Greenwood Avenue. On Monday, the 18th, at 12:21, the Fire Department, along with Madison Police, ambulance squad, numerous area ambulances and fire departments, the county hazmat team, and the county medical ambulance bus for a chemical release at Drew University in the indoor pool area. Fourteen young patients were treated at the scene and 12 were transported to Morris Medical Center. Congratulations to volunteer firefighters Patrick Colligan and Randy Vargas on each completing their 180-hour firefighter two class and successfully passing their state exam. Chief DeRosa, along with firefighters Bruce Barrios and Tom Boylan, conducted a final inspection of the borough's new fire truck at the manufacturer's facility. Some corrections are being made before she heads home to Madison. She is expected to be here sometime in August. The Madison Fire Department will be participating in the library's fire truck event this coming Saturday, July 30th. It is located at the YMCA parking lot and runs from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Then, from the Madison Police Department, Madison Police Department is offering gun safety locks to our residents to promote further gun safety. You can call the front desk at 973-593-3000 to make an appointment to receive yours or walk into headquarters and inquire. We have also promoted our gun safety program on social media and our webpage, www.rosmet.org, under the Police Department's Services and Program. This past month, Patrolman Chris Barnes completed a two-week-long rigorous training of police motor officer school, where he will be assigned to the police motorcycle unit as part of his patrol duties. Our patrol, our police motors will be commonly seen in residential areas, interacting with our community members. Finally, next week, August 2nd, Madison Police Department will be hosting National Night Out along with our partners. Please come down to wave every place, take part in the facilities where the department members, elected officials, and public safety partners will be present. We'll have live music, ice cream, hot dogs, and fun for kids and families. We cannot wait to see everyone on this great night. Check out rosmet.org for more information. So, from the Borough Clerk and Tax. In the Tax Collector's Office, tax bills were recently mailed out to all property owners. Please note there is a short turnaround time. Property taxes are due August 1st, but there is a 10-day grace period. Taxes that are paid after August 10th will be subject to an interest penalty. The county has to wait for the state to pass their budget before they can give out the tax rate, which caused the short turnaround time on the bill. Please contact the Tax Collector if you have any questions. From the Finance Department, inside the tax bill, residents will find our annual one-sheet budget summary. This document gives an excellent snapshot of property taxes, fiscal budgets, and services provided. We continue to face very short-term difficulties, but we have been able to manage those challenges. Residents that seek apartments can visit Rosmet if they would like to see the budget summary. Cosmines are also available in Hartley Dodge Memorial. On a different topic, this evening, we'll have a short discussion with the Chief Financial Officer on the Corrective Action Plan. The Corrective Action Plan is in response to recommendations that are made in the audit. It is important to take the funds, respect these recommendations in a public meeting. Fortunately, the borough does not have any significant audit issues, and as such, we only have two small recommendations to discuss. Finally, this evening, we are appropriating $250,000 of American Rescue Plan dollars towards the purchase of security equipment for the borough. The funds are being appropriated as a grant, which will allow the Finance Department to separately track the appropriation and expenditures, which is an important requirement for the federal government. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hoover.
Yes, in the interest of saving time, given the length of our agenda, I'm going to present the compact report from the Downtown Development Commission Business Director of Business Development. Downtown Development Commission regular meeting for August has been canceled. The next meeting will be on September 15th at 7:15, and everybody is invited. Please visit the Madison Farmers Market on Thursdays at Dodge Field from 6 through Thursday, November 17th. Market features live music weekly. The Chamber of Commerce, ladies' night is scheduled for September 15th, 2022, from 5:30 to 8:30. The Madison Community Arts Center, Wednesday open-mic events are attracting audiences of 35 to 40 people and growing. Literary open mics are on first Wednesdays, music open mics on second Wednesdays, comedy open mics are on third Wednesdays. That's all I have.
Mayor? Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Engineering Department, masonry cleaning at the Hartley Dodge Memorial Plaza continued throughout June and July, as well as reconstruction of the entrance ramp at the West Wing, which is the courtside of Hartley Dodge Memorial. Over at the MRC, clearing is in progress for the new accessible trail that's being constructed to connect Ridgedale Avenue to the Recreation Complex. And curb installation and stormwater drainage improvements were made along Norman Circle, where the road reconstruction project is in progress. Our borough engineer also offered this announcement to Madison residents who are being affected by the 2022 Road Improvement Program. He advises that a two-week window for all milling and paving operations is anticipated to start later this week. Tilcon, New York, which is one of the contractors, has confirmed they would like to start road milling operations in Madison this Thursday, the 28th. And then paving is scheduled to follow, starting Thursday, August 4th, and be complete by Monday, August 8th. The affected streets are Union Hill Road, North and South, Dwyer Street, Lee Ave, Lee Drive, half of Surrey Lane, Elm Street, and Womer Street, which will all be milled and paved under the Morris County Cooperative contracts. And Howard Street and Norman Circle, which are undergoing reconstruction, will also be milled and paved under a contract with Savelli General Contracting. The current weather forecasts anticipate about a 50% chance of rain two days during that two-week period, and so the schedules may be adjusted accordingly. And the borough appreciates everyone's cooperation during these heavy construction activities in town. From the Public Works Department, the Sewer Department replaced all the storm grates and manhole covers as part of the 2022 road paving project. This is a big savings to the municipality because we can do it in-house. All the storm basins on those roads have been cleaned out as well. All of our sewer stations are up and running, and we've had very few problems. This reflects years of good maintenance and prudent capital planning for various upgrades to our stations, which have had a positive impact on operations. The Public Works Department reports that they are engaged in long-term planning for adopting electric vehicles, noting that this is a priority for the department to integrate EVs into our fleet wherever applicable. Planning for the rooftop solar project at the DPW garage continues to move forward. Our Superintendent Ken O'Brien reports that they are looking more deeply at the Public Works main building and areas at the rear of the Public Works facility that are not open to the public for installation, possible installation of solar photovoltaics. To conserve water, all lawn irrigation on borough property has been reduced in running time to the minimum of what is felt to be necessary to maintain the grass, and mowing schedules have been reduced to coincide with reduced watering. Public Works has been busy spreading mulch and weeding in all the parking lots, and they added a new ground cover material at the dog park that they are trying out to prevent muddy patches in the dog park. Ken says so far, the dogs like it. Public Works has put down 11 tons of blacktop in the past few weeks on potholes and patches around town, and they wish to remind residents to contact the Clerk's Office in order to get heavy metal items and white goods, such as appliances, picked up and recycled from curbside. That's all from Engineering and Public Works.
Thank you. May we move on to Communications and Petitions?
Yes, Mayor. The mayor and council have received emails regarding the preservation of Drew Forest from the following residents. Deborah McDonough, Joe Zelman, Marilyn Lutuski, Catherine Overguard, Susan Schreiber, Catherine Keen, and from the following organizations as well. Native Plant Society of New Jersey, the Great Swamp Watershed, and the Potpourri River Coalition. Also received was an email from Dennis Schreiber of Greenwich Court, who forwarded an article entitled "Chasing the Utopian Energy" to mayor and council, and an email dated July the 8th from Mike Shagru, President of Volunteer Division of the Fire Department, regarding the readiness concerns of the Fire Department.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to the first of two invitations for public comment. This is the one that is limited to our discussion items or the resolutions, which I will go through shortly. If you want to comment on ordinances that are up for hearing, you may comment when we open those hearings, and if you want to comment on ordinances that are up for introduction or any other topic, we will have a second comment period a little bit later in the meeting. So these are the items that you may comment on. The Climate Action Update, Climate Action Plan Update, which will be here shortly, and also the Corrective Action Plan. And these are the resolutions you may comment on, and again, please bear with me because we have quite an extensive number of resolutions. Resolution 177 is appointing Lucas McCory to the position of probationary firefighter, and this is to replace the retiring Jack Dunn. Resolution 178 is increasing the hours for plumbing subcode official inspector and the electric subcode inspector to 37.5 hours per week, and this is reflecting the heavy load, this is not just in Madison, but we provide building code services to the borough of Chatham. Resolution 179 approving salary increase for Special Officer Thomas Downs, who's school resource officer from $31.83 to $35 an hour. Resolution 180 is agreement between Borough Madison Altis to allow equipment in Cook Avenue Parking Lot utility poles to be moved. This is coming before the reconstruction of Cook Avenue Parking Lot, which is a project for next year. 181, purchase of police vehicle accessory equipment and other related from the police outside duty not to exceed $5,660. Resolution 182 is an authorized submission grant application to the Department of Community Affairs protective equipment for firefighters. Resolution 183 is historic preservation easement agreement with the county of Morris for the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, the James Library Building. The 184 is historic preservation easement for Hartley Dodge Memorial. This is reflecting grants received from the county. Resolution 185 is authorizing change order and final payment to REAVAX contractors for road crack ceiling program. This was funded through Resolution 72, and this is additional $2,340. Resolution 186 is authorizing purchase, installation, new entry doors, and related work for Department for DPW in the amount of $11,375 authorized through ordinance 2022. Resolution 187 is authorized purchase and installation of windows and related work for DPW, funded through the same ordinance in an amount of $39,900. Time for me to take a sip of water. Resolution 188 is granting Turn the Town Teal Permission for ribbons on trees in the streets of Madison from February, from September 1 through the 30th, in support of the Turn the Town's Teal Campaign to Fight Ovarian Cancer. 189, authorizing donation of surplus miscellaneous items to Morris Habitat Humanity. This is items in the civic center. The next six resolutions all are authorizing contracts under various co-op pricing. So 190 is for the Morris County Co-op. Union County is 191. 192 is the Educational Service Commission of New Jersey. 193 is the NJ Cooperative Purchase Alliance. And 194 is the Somerset County Cooperative Pricing Council. 195 is the State Cooperative Pricing Council vendors. And Resolution 196, you'll be hearing about shortly, is the resolution approving the 2021 Corrective Action Plan Report. Resolution 197 is confirming the membership of Shee Zenning into the Madison Hook and Ladder Company as a volunteer firefighter. Resolution 198 is rejecting bid for the purchase of new unused water utility electronic AMR/AMI system water meter communication modules and reauthorizing the bid. The sole bidder failed to submit required first-page statement of ownership disclosure form. Resolution 199, authorizing Chamber of Commerce sidewalk sale days, August 25th through September 3rd. Resolution 200 ratifying the purchase order contract for video camera security equipment to Johnstown Communications Springfield. And this is $975,000 and authorized through multiple ordinances. Resolution 201 is awarding contract to Aspen Engineering for electrical engineering services to our electric utility. Resolution 202 is to approve the insertion of item of revenue budget in the year 2022, and this is $250,000. This is ARPA funds that will be used for the camera security and card access projects. Resolution 203 is renewal application for livery owner's license for travelers taxiing limousines. And Resolution 204 related is delivery driver's permit for travelers taxiing. Resolution 205 is authorizing instant raffle games for the Elks. Resolution 206 is approving raffle license application for the Thursday Morning Club. And just remember, these may or may not be on the final exam. Resolution 207, approving raffle license for the auxiliary of the Madison Ambulance Corps. Resolution 208 is approving raffle licenses for the Borough Orchestra of New Jersey. Resolution 209 is agreement between the Borough of Madison and Madison Housing Partnership to be administrative agent for affordable housing units in the Borough of Madison, and this is part of our settlement agreement. Resolution 210 is supporting the adoption of environmental-friendly preferred purchasing policy. And Resolution 211 is accepting the irrevocable retirement of firefighter Jack Dunn, who, after 31 years of service to the borough, is retiring. And it seems like, just like yesterday, I was buying paint from him and Dunn's hardware. So those are the ordinances you may, I mean, the resolutions you may comment on, or the two items. two items. If you wish to comment on any of those items, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, the agenda item you are commenting on, and you may start speaking. Try to keep your comments to three minutes, and if there's, I will give you a one-minute grace. And again, if you want to comment any of those things that I didn't mention, that time will be coming up shortly.
Kathleen Caca Valley, 82 Central Avenue, Madison.
First of all, I just want to commend the Borough staff and council people because I read through all the resolutions and ordinances, and I had some questions, and I emailed them, and I got very quick responses. I was extremely impressed. I do have a couple of other, one is a process question. Several of the resolutions referred to attached lists, but there were no lists attached. And the other question I had was, Resolution 202, it mentioned $6,610, but then the amounts further down were the $250,000. I didn't understand what the $6,610 was. That's it.
That was a typographical error, but corrected and posted on the board.
Thank you for catching that. That was part of the exam. You're, type of graphical error, the corrected resolution is posted outside.
The correct figure is 250, Mayor.
It is 250,000, yep.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Tom Harland Puddus, 27 Palmeroy Road. Welcome back after a little hiatus, one meeting a month. I don't know if you can do that year-round, but it's nice to have that break probably in the summer. Thanks very much, Rachel, for the whole climate action that you're working on. It's going to be such a positive effect on the future of our borough, being clean, green, and educating the residents as to what we can do to make the borough just a more sustainable place. So a couple of questions I have. You only have three minutes, right, Bob?
Yep.
Okay. So Resolution 180, 2022, about Altice USA, this is a very personal request, but that's the same company that has cables hanging around our utility poles around the borough? So do you think you'll be able to get them to remove some of the other cables that are still hanging around the borough?
Yeah, we'll, we'll address that, yep.
Okay. Maybe not tonight, but eventually. It's been about six months now. And then the next question I had, so Resolution 202, 2022, is a grant that you're getting, you said it's an item of revenue that you're inserting in the budget. So it sounded like you said a grant for the handicap accessible park playground? Or did I mishear you? I don't know.
That's okay.
And if it is, then I was just wondering if the other ordinance on the agenda for the $500,000 for the handicap accessible playground is in addition to this grant, or the whole playground project is going to be 550, but you're going to only need 250?
We'll clarify that.
Got that?
Yep.
All right, sir. And then the next question is, so you might have elaborated on Resolution 209, 2022 at another meeting that I missed. So are we going to lose the administrative management of the borough's affordable housing, and we're going to let, what is that, Partnership of Morris County be the administrative agent? So that's unclear. And like I said, you might have discussed it at another meeting, I don't know. But I know we've managed our affordable housing very well. We're a model for most of the towns in the rest of the state. And then the last thing I'd like to also, just put in my kudos for firefighter Dunn for being a good part of the fire squad for the last 31 years I've known him, for quite a few years too. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. So to clarify, so the, yeah, the agreement with Altice is related to Cook Avenue only. The work on putting their cables through town was halted as they had an agreement with Verizon to hang those cables. Verizon does not own the utility poles we do, so we are in the process of clarifying that, and we did some areas have them secure it, and where they may not have, our own crews secure the cables. We hope to have that moving forward shortly. Resolution 202 is related to ARPA funds that will be used for security cameras. That's not the playground. So the playground-related is an ordinance that is appropriating money, and so that will be coming up shortly. I appreciate your question, Affordable Housing Agent, because that does seem a little confusing that our, you know, being one of the few communities that has a housing authority, we have a very well-managed portfolio of affordable housing. This does not relate to the units that are under the control of the Housing Authority or even HQM. This is related to the inclusionary projects that are coming down the pike or already put in place, such as, you know, the development on King's Road and Division. There were six houses that went up and included a duplex affordable unit. So that is indeed restricted. So when that changes hands, we need to make sure it is affirmatively marketed and remains affordable housing. So that's what they're, that's an example of what this organization would do, would be to monitor that. As we have the theater project come online, the Madison Mall Apartments, these are all inclusionary projects that are not under the management of the Housing Authority, and we need to make sure they are used, not only used for their intended purposes, which is very important to do affordable housing, but to make sure we meet the letter of the law in our agreement. So that's what this organization would be doing. They will not be monitoring the Housing Authority property. That's in very good hands. And I echo your comments on firefighter Dunn. Always nicest guy and always very helpful, great service to the community. Anyone else wishing to comment on items that were on the agenda as outlined? Seeing done, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to Agenda Discussions, Climate Action Plan. Rachel.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to start with some context tonight. Why does Madison need a climate action process? For those of us that were here last Monday, a week from tonight, we had torrential rains here in Madison. They caused flash flooding in northern New Jersey and resulted in emergency water rescues of people trapped in cars. Meanwhile, Madison residents and 100 million other Americans were under heat warnings or advisories last week. This year, we're approaching the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Ida. There were 30 deaths in Louisiana as a result of Ida, followed closely by 29 in New Jersey. Hundreds of millions of dollars in property damage were suffered in New Jersey as a result of Ida. Here in Madison, between September 1st and 3rd, when the hurricane swept over our state, Madison firefighters pumped out over 70 flooded basements here in town. Some had two to four inches, some had two to five feet in their basements, and everything in between, as Chief Lou DeRosa wrote to the Borough, to the council. He said, "Our firefighters are tired but won't stop until all calls for help are answered." The next morning, the Borough received a call from a grateful resident on North Street where the Madison Fire Department spent from 1:00 a.m. to 2:30 in the morning pumping three feet of water from her basement. She wrote to, she called to express her appreciation and said that she wouldn't have known what to do without our Fire Department's help. All of this reminds us that Madison is vulnerable to extreme heat, increased frequency and intensity of severe storms, and changes in our ecology. For instance, the Madison Eagle ran an editorial just last week on combating mosquitoes and ticks, referencing the disease and nuisance of these pests that we suffer with. Our region now endures 15 more days of tick and mosquito activity since 1980 due to longer periods of summer heat. So what are we to do? The federal government is hamstrung on climate action, leaving climate mitigation to state and local government. Engagement at the state, municipal, and neighborhood level is not a meager complement to engagement at the federal level. Given the current political landscape, it is a necessary substitute for that engagement. The federal government may exert many more, many times more, control over emissions than a city does, but both entities add to or deplete the same carbon budget. Any emissions reduction anywhere in any sector counts as progress toward the same goal. In fact, just last week, President Fierde Liso of the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities commended Madison for taking the initiative to mitigate the worst risks of climate change, and he underscored that climate action and leadership must start at the local level. So what is Madison doing? Madison's climate action process during its 2022 pilot program has adopted tools from the state of New Jersey that has offered plans and action, vulnerability assessments and work plans to set energy and resiliency goals at the local level. We've put those tools to work to start to devise a community energy plan and a community action process, a climate action process for our town. Over the last quarter, in April, May, and June, the Climate Action Committee has met with Borough staff to analyze proposed climate initiatives to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, encourage the transition to renewable energy, and prepare for a fossil-free future with increased electrical demand and enhanced resiliency here in Madison. Tonight, I want to highlight some of the goals and initiatives that the Climate Action Committee has been working on in partnership with Borough staff and administration. Some of the initiatives that we've proposed are as follows: to stop buying internal combustion engine vehicles for light-duty, non-emergency use. I want to point out that by replacing our light-duty fleet, as internal combustion engine vehicles become obsolete, Madison can meet this goal and say, can meet this goal of greenhouse gas reductions and save money, because every three plug-in electric vehicles saves over $100,000 in fuel costs over 10 years. The committee has advocated to lift the cap on solar PV installations for government buildings, including school buildings. That way, school roofs with excellent solar access, like the high school, can generate onsite renewable energy. We're advocating that all fossil fuel space and water heating systems in our municipal buildings be replaced with high-efficiency heat pump systems for heating and cooling as the existing gas burning systems become obsolete. This will save the Borough operating costs, provide more control and comfort in those buildings, and improve indoor air quality. We have advocated to implement time of use rates for regular peak and off-peak electricity usage for all Madison Electric customers. We're exploring ways to incentivize applicants to the Planning Board and the Construction Department to submit a solar rooftop feasibility study or standardized energy assessment for their project. And we're planning a comprehensive communications program to provide outreach and education to residents and businesses in Madison about the available statewide incentive programs for energy efficiency and electric vehicles, the benefits of building system electrification, rolling out a town-wide EV encouragement campaign, and encouraging water conservation and other energy and resiliency choices that residents and businesses can make to save money, conserve resources, and improve year-round comfort and control in their buildings. So our goal is to present a committee report this fall. This will follow in the footsteps of the Strategic Planning Initiative, those committees on the utilities and finance and budget which presented reports to council after their pilot programs, or after their year-long programs to make recommendations. The climate committee's report will contain proposed goals, recommendations, and processes for the Borough to adopt. So tonight was really meant as a progress report to let you all know, the council and the public, that we've been working hard to meet with experts and the Borough staff, our planning and legal professionals, Borough administration, and the mayor, council members, and other stakeholders, to explore the proposed initiatives, see what is going to work especially well for Madison, or what won't work well, given some of the unique conditions we have here, such as our own utility. And we're looking forward to presenting this report this fall that will provide a series of energy goals related to greenhouse gas reductions, electrification, enhanced resiliency, processes that we recommend the Borough to undertake on an annual basis to measure progress towards meeting those goals, and initiatives that we recommend our Borough experts, such as our department heads, administration, and staff, adopt in their planning and policy development, whether it's through capital planning, operations, applications to the Planning Board, zoning board, and Construction Department, and a myriad of other ways that levers that we have here in town to start to move the needle on greenhouse gas reduction and resiliency. So I'll be coming before you all again this fall, and will be presenting a comprehensive report with recommendations for consideration.
Thank you very much. Good report, and I'd also thank you for pulling together the meeting with Commissioner Fideri.
Fierde Liso.
Thank you.
It's a tough one.
Can't say his name right now, won't say it. But we had a conversation around the societal benefit, and your own personal experience of switching over to heat pumping and a electric, if you pump the water heater in that pipeline out, that you're not eligible as an electric utility, our own electric utility, and that's contrary to what the societal benefit should be doing in the earth if you switch over. It's not just a Madison thing, we need other utilities to think about, some of those statistics count, you have a good chance of the heat in your home with oil, probably going to access the gas, and if they wanted to switch over to heat pump, because they're part of the plastics company, they wouldn't be eligible. So it's, with open mind, nothing for this year, but it sounds helpful in the area.
Fine presentation.
Thanks, John.
Irene, any questions for the comments?
No questions.
Corrective Action Plan, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. I come up before council annually for this ministerial action. The Corrective Action Plan details the items that, and findings that were found in the audit. The audit was issued and discussed briefly at the last council meeting. It's up on Rosenet for anyone who wants to look at it. The Corrective Action Plan highlights the two findings that were there and analyzes them and discusses potential corrective action. One of them is segregation of duties, which we've had every year, which is a statement by the auditors saying, "In a perfect world, we would have a separate, a separate window to collect dollars and a separate window to issue permits." We are collecting less and less actual dollars these days, much more of the transactions are happening online. 59% of the funds coming in for the electric and water utility are now coming in through our online payment, but in the few times we do receive cash, there is not a separate function. For example, getting a dog license, you come and you pay for the dog license, and the same person you give the money to issues the dog license to you, or you go to the Construction Department. You give them money, they give you a license. In a perfect world, you would give a payment window the money, they would give you the receipt, and they would go and collect your license. Almost every town in the state of New Jersey has this as an audit mention, and the cost to resolve it is just too great, and no, very few towns resolve this. So it's a recurring finding in the audit. The second is animal control receipts being turned over within 48 hours, the Health Department being at a different location, and us adopting a different payment system led to some of the deposits not making it in 48 hours. The Health Department will be coming and moving here to Hartley Dodge with the renovation and placement of affordable housing over on Walnut Street, so that will, that will resolve that issue on its own. And so with that, I am here to entertain questions if there are any.
No questions. Thanks, Jim.
No questions. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. And this is Resolution 196, as I already noted on my first. We are now onto ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on June 13, 2022. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public, Hasting Sein.
Okay, before I call up the first ordinance, I will note that with the heavy listing of ordinance for hearing, we have grouped several together based on similarities as far as the ordinance or the funding source, so you will be able to comment on multiple ordinances at single time. With that, I call up ordinances for second reading. I ask the clerk to read ordinance by title. Ordinance 27-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending and supplementing Chapter 185 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic to Correct Inconsistencies, Establish Electrical Vehicle Parking Parameters, Street Parking Enhancement Violation Scale, and Designating Additional 15-Minute Parking Spaces and Amending Chapter 195 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Land Development to Correct a Citation.
I open hearing for ordinance 27. Anyone wishing to comment, please step up.
Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move adoption of ordinance 27-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? And the title pretty much says it all. All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 27-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. We will now be having the hearing for ordinance 28 and 29 held together. These are both funded through Open Space for Preservation and Recreation Fund, and we will read both by title, open hearing for both, and then move each one separately. Ordinance by title, ordinance 28, 22, and 29-2020.
Ordinance 28, 2022, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $260,000 from the Municipal Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund for the Memorial Park Trail Improvements Phase 1. And ordinance 29, 2022, is an ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $555,000 from the Municipal Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund for the Dodge Field Handicapped Accessible Playground Construction Project.
I open hearings for both ordinance 28 and 29. Anyone wishing to comment on these two ordinances, please step forward.
Tom Allen Putus, 27 Palmer Road. So, the first question I have is, these two appropriations are to be funded in this calendar year, 2022? You shaking, nodding yes, Mayor? Okay. So, that totals $815,000, if I did my math right, I just did it right now. And I thought we only raised about $700,000 a year. I'm sure we have some reserves there, right, Jim? You're nodding. Yeah, a lot of reserves, hopefully. So, we have a lot of different areas where we spend historic preservation and open, open space recreation money, so maybe there's going to be an update to the budget online and all of the, the projects, some that probably got moved, some that were already completed. So, if it's already available somewhere, updated, I guess you could point us in that direction, but if not, we'd probably have to see that, because these sound like great projects, but it's a lot of the money that you, it's one year, more than one year's revenue for these projects. I don't know much about the Memorial Park Trail Improvement, so I guess somebody will elaborate on that. And you're only commenting on these, these two right now, right? And then the third one has no real comment, so, okay. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. So...
Mayor, I have some notes on these, if you want me to talk about the, both the projects and the encumbrance here.
Thank you. I'll save my voice.
Okay. So, for ordinance 28, Memorial Park Trails Phase 1, the estimated total cost of the project is $260,000. We are expecting, we were granted $196,000 grant from the Morris County Trails Program, which will be reimbursed to the borough. And so, the outlay, ultimately, the outlay from, from the borough will be $64,000. So, we need to encumber the money as part of our agreement to receive the grant, but the, the majority of this project will be funded by the Morris County Trails Program. And it deals with constructing a series of trails connecting from behind the skating rink and dog park to the ball fields. It'll be a combination of sandy gravel trails, which will improve the kind of just, you know, dirt paths we have there now, as well as a number of boardwalk areas over wetland areas in, in the woods there. So, this will be a great improvement to the trail system for Phase 1. And I'll mention as a side note, we're also putting in a grant for Phase 2 of these trails to connect Memorial Park to the Del Barton Park, so that's hopefully coming in the next one to two years. So, for Dodge Field Playground, the estimated total cost of the project is reflected in the ordinance, it's the $555,000. We received a community development block grant from Morris County that will cover $125,000 of that. And so, the final outlay from the borough is anticipated to be about $430,000. So, not as much of it will be funded by grants, but still a significant reduction. And I want to underscore that in terms of the Dodge Field Playground, which we are designing to be accessible for people of all abilities, I think it'll be great to have an accessible playground that'll make Madison's recreation facilities more equitable and open to all users, and it's a long-anticipated project for the borough, and I'm really excited that a number of volunteers have stepped forward to get engaged in that process, and we're looking forward to reaching out to more members of the community to have a really good stakeholder process for that playground.
Thank you, Rachel. And as far as the cash, these are covered, correctly, these are sizable for the annual income, but covered through the cash flow, and as noted, will be partially reimbursed. Anyone else wishing to comment on ordinances 28 or 29? Seeing none, I close the hearing for these two ordinances, and we will now ask for a motion on ordinance 28, 22, which is appropriating $260,000 for the Trail Improvements Phase 1.
Mayor, I move ordinance 28-2022.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Not used to hearing, just three yeses, sorry. I declare ordinance 28, 2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 29-2022, which is one appropriating $555,000 from Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Trust for the Dodge Field Handicapped Accessible Playground Construction Project. I have a motion.
Mayor, I move ordinance 29-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 29-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Now, ordinance 30-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison replacing ordinance 34, 2028, setting the salary ranges for non-union full-time employees.
I open hearing on ordinance 30-2022. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 30-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 30-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. We are now doing the hearings for ordinances 31 and 32, which are both related to, one is a water utility capital ordinance, the other is electric utility capital ordinance. Ordinance, please read ordinance, the title of ordinance 31-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $500,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the Potable Water Well Improvements.
And ordinance 32-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $250,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for signal transformers and lighting replacement work.
I open the hearings for ordinances 31 and 32. Anyone wishing to comment on these two ordinances, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing. I ask, now we ask for a motion on ordinance 31, 2022, the ordinance appropriating $500,000 from Water Capital Improvement Fund for Potable Water Well Improvements.
Mayor, I move ordinance 31-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion?
I can add a little information about what this covers. This ordinance will support the renovation of Well B, which is on Station Road. In addition to upgrading the station, we're also anticipating significant energy savings once the existing electric motors there are replaced with variable frequency drives for lower energy use and better performance. I'll also mention, I have some comments on 32. Shall I go ahead now?
We'll hold on.
Okay.
Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 31-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 32-2022, which is appropriating $250,000 from Electric Capital Improvement Fund for Signal Transformer and Lighting Replacement Work. Motion, please.
Mayor, I move ordinance 32-2022.
And council discussion?
So, just to unpack this one a little bit, this ordinance for $250,000 is largely to cover the Cook Ave parking lot reconstruction. We're going to have new underground wiring there, there'll be new transformers provided, and this ordinance will also help us purchase new LED parking lot lighting in the decorative downtown style. So, it's exciting that we're moving forward with appropriating money for this long-sought-after project. This ordinance also includes additional pedestrian crossing beacons that have been very successful and popular around town. We'll be purchasing several more to deploy on our, in our streets.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Declare ordinance 32-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. We now go on to the hearing for ordinances 33, 34, and 35, 20-22. These are all related to connection fees from our utilities. 33 is electric utility, 34 is water utility, and 35 is sewer utilities. Our fees are only paid by developers for new development. Can I have the three ordinances by title?
Ordinance 33, 2022, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 94 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Electric Utility to Update the Electric Connection Fee Schedule.
Ordinance 34.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to Update the Water Connection Fee Schedule.
Ordinance 35.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 155 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Sewer to Update the Sewer Connection Fee Schedule.
I now open the, these three ordinances, 33, 34, and 35, for hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on these ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing. Now entertain a motion on ordinance 33, which is amending the electric utility connection fee.
Mayor, I move ordinance 33-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 33-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 34-2022 is amending Chapter 190 for the water utility connection fees. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move ordinance 34-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 34-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. I will now entertain a motion for ordinance 35-2022, which is amending Chapter 155 of Borough Code entitled Sewer to Update the Sewer Connection Fees.
Mayor, I move ordinance 35-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 35-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. In case you're wondering, I, we can't group all those statements together, I have to do one for each of the ordinances. I will now have the hearing for ordinances 36, 37, 38, which are all related to capital from the various utilities, or general capital, electric capital, and water capital. Will the clerk please read the ordinance by title? Ordinance 36-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $100,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for access controls, cameras, and other security enhancements and improvements.
Ordinance 37-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $100,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for access controls, cameras, and other security enhancements and improvements.
And ordinance 38-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $300,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for access controls, cameras, and other security enhancements and improvements.
I now open the hearings for ordinances 36, 37, and 38 related to general electrical and water capital appropriations. Anyone wishing to comment on these, please step forward.
Dennis Schreiber, Greenwich Court. I just have one question, and that is, obviously, we can see that the cameras are for the electric department, for the water department. What exactly is the purpose of the cameras that are coming out of, being paid for out of the capital, general capital account?
Any other, yeah, we'll answer, any other comments or questions, and we'll answer them all.
Just for that one, that's it. I'll be back later.
Yeah, just for these, yep. This, this security system is for not just utilities, but also this building and all the borough properties, and so it is being funded through utilities and general capital as a full, full program across the borough. Any other comments on these ordinances? Seeing none, I close the hearing. Ordinance, I will now entertain a motion for ordinance 36-2022, which is appropriating $100,000 from general capital for access controls, cameras, and other security enhancements and improvements.
Mayor, I move ordinance 36-2022.
Second.
Council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 36-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance 37, 2022 is appropriate $100,000 from Electric Capital Improvement Fund for access controls, cameras, and other security enhancements. I entertain a motion for that ordinance.
Mayor, I move ordinance 37-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 37-2022 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and file the ordinance according to the law. I will now entertain a motion for ordinance 38-2022, which is appropriating $300,000 from Water Capital Improvement Fund for access controls, cameras, and other security enhancements.
Mayor, I move ordinance 38-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Mayor, I'll just add that taken together, these three ordinances, as you said, represent a significant investment in securing the, our critical infrastructure, that's our water and our electric utilities, our sewer utility, as well as the public safety building, our athletic fields, this building, all of our municipal facilities. It's a big investment, but between the additional cameras and the access controls, it, it feels like, you know, we're doing the right thing to secure all of these facilities for at least, you know, a decade or two to come with these major investments. And while it's a, it adds up to, you know, a significant amount of money, it's, will be a coordinated system that can be operated with open-source software and upgraded in the years to come. So, it's a forward-looking improvement that, you know, while takes your breath away a little bit to invest in right now, I know it's going to be a worthwhile investment and a much-needed one since we exert, you know, all of our own security and control over these facilities. There's no one else who is keeping watch on our critical infrastructure other than Madison, so we have to make this investment.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 38-2022. I declare ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and follow the ordinance according to the law. Ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two.
Ordinance of the borough of Madison amending chapter one ninety-three of the Madison Borough Code entitled Medicinal Cannabis Dispensary to Include a Permit Application.
I open hearing on ordinance thirty-nine twenty twenty-two. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I'll move ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I move ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hurley?
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two adopted and finally passed and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in newspaper and follow the ordinance according to the law. We are now on to our second of two invitations for public comment. This is when you may comment on any topic, including the ordinance, introduction of ordinances, or anything else that you wish to share. Same rules apply. Step forward, state your name, address, and then try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we'll give you a one-minute grace and have you stop at four. Welcome.
Deborah Ellis, twelve Godfrey Road, Montclair, New Jersey, and I will keep to three minutes. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm speaking on behalf of the Native Plant Society of New Jersey tonight in support of the Drew Forest. The Native Plant Society was founded in nineteen eighty-five and has over a thousand residents, I mean, members statewide, including many in Morris County. I am a vice president of the society, as well as a leader of the Essex County chapter, and I am here from Montclair to thank you for your efforts to preserve the Drew Forest and urge you to continue those efforts. We at the Native Plant Society are dedicated to the appreciation, protection, and study of the native flora of New Jersey, i.e. the flowers that were here and the plants that were here before the colonists came. For that reason, on June sixteenth, our Board of Directors formally adopted a resolution supporting the Drew Forest. We applaud your commitment to preserving the entire fifty-three acre forest because it serves as a unique living classroom, a critical native plant refuge, and a major wildlife corridor. As an organization dedicated to education, we laud Drew Forest's public walking paths, nature trail guide, many labeled plants, and benches that encourage public appreciation of nature. The thousands of flowers, shrubs, and trees that are native to New Jersey and that thrive in the Drew Forest are exceptional habitat for pollinators, birds, and other wildlife. The forest serves as a wildlife migration corridor due to its proximity to the Loontaca Brook Preserve, the Gerald A. Farms Preserve, and the Great Swamp Wildlife Refuge. New Jersey, as I'm sure you know, is the most densely populated state in the country, and areas that maintain native flora are rare and precious. The Drew Forest's healthy native understory is unique in North Jersey. South Jersey has millions of acres of the pine barrens. We have nothing like that in North Jersey. Many green areas here, such as the woods at Jockey Hollow, are full of plants from other countries that have invaded our woods. They may look like they're great for nature, but they're not. Unfortunately, our pollinators and birds generally cannot eat plants from other countries. A well-known example that you may be familiar with is that monarchs, monarch butterflies can only lay their eggs on milkweed. That's native to here. In addition to the climate crisis, the world faces a biodiversity crisis so severe that it's being called a sixth extinction. The number of birds in North America plummeted by three billion in the last fifty years. Just this month, the International Union...
One minute.
Okay. For Conservation of Nature classified the monarch butterfly as endangered. Much of the biodiversity crisis is due, is due to habitat loss, and the only way to reverse the declines is to preserve places like Drew Forest. It would be nothing less than tragic for the people of Madison, Morris County, and indeed all of New Jersey to lose this precious resource. I thank you for listening, and thank you for your support of the Drew Forest.
Thank you, Deborah.
Should I sign my name here?
Yes, please. Certainly, one of the things that has come out of this effort is not only to hear all the great support locally and throughout organizations, is every time we have a speaker, I, I learn a bit more, so I appreciate you sharing.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that you learned something.
Good evening. Jocelyn Cahoon from forty Barnsdale Road. I'm just following up on an email that I sent to the mayor on July seventh. This is in regard to offering to move the cone flowers from the Madison Civic Center to some other borough location before that building is demolished. My husband, Steve Tyndall, and I have been working at the Madison Civic Center for a number of years, doing, planting flowers and bulbs and things like that, and I would really hate to see those just squashed by some demolition crew. So, one question is, is there an update on the timing of that? The last weeding that I did there was on May Day, and of course, now they're taking over, so it looks kind of sad, but I'm happy to move those before the demolition, once the weather's a little bit better than this week. And the other question would be, who is the best point person for me to contact in regard to offering that help if there is a location that's identified in the borough? More pollinator flowers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn, and, and thank you to you and Stephen for your dedication in the planting of those flowers originally, and I apologize, as you probably realize from automatic reply, I was on vacation, and still, it will, for every day I take off, it takes me three days to recover. So, we will, our staff will, will be in touch. I will pull up that email, and we'll make sure, because it would be great to relocate those flowers, and so we'll work with our parks committees and others to find great locations.
Mr. Mayor, is this an appropriate time to discuss or comment on the ordinances that are to be introduced?
You can, you can, ordinances to be introduced or anything else?
Oh, great, okay, thanks. Dennis Schreiber again, Greenwich Court. This one seems minor in the grand scheme of things, but we're spending a lot of money on different projects and undertakings here, so there's one that's been a pet peeve of mine, and I'll be honest with you, I don't understand why we're doing it, and I, and I mean that in a, in a nice, questioning, curious manner. But I'm referring to ordinance forty-one, two thousand twenty-two, the three hundred thousand for the bump outs on Green Avenue. And early in the budget process this year, I think, I spoke up at a council meeting and suggested the borough could save it, and I think the number at the time was, that was bandied about, it was proposed, was six hundred thousand for a couple of bump outs on Green Avenue. Now I see it's a three hundred thousand dollar project. And, you know, but presently, we have bump outs on Prospect, and I really can't tell what the benefit of the bump outs provide. Why are we spending this money, and what good does, what's the benefit from this effort? And I'm sorry to see this, you still have the intention to move forward with this project. I don't know what the benefits to be derived are. I can tell you that there are a lot of minor aggravations that occur to people with the existing bump outs on Prospect. They block out the bicycle lanes and force riders back onto the roads. Snow plows bang into the Belgian brick and damage the plows and the Belgian blocks. They impede normal traffic flow by making it impossible to go around, and the cars are stopped to make a left turn. It's just slowing down traffic in town, and if, you know, if that's frustrating, traffic's frustrating enough, that's just one more additional irritation. And they sometimes force drivers into oncoming lanes, and this one on Prospect is particularly noteworthy, I think. As you try to clear the bump out, oftentimes, I've almost gone into the oncoming lane because you can't really clearly see the bump out, and you don't want to damage your tire, and you don't want to damage your, your rims. So, sometimes you go a little too far, and if there's oncoming cars, you can have a close call. So, I still don't understand what benefit is derived from these things. I know this says pedestrian, but I don't see what good it's done on Prospect. I don't think it's going to provide any benefit on Green. You can save yourselves three hundred thousand dollars, and Tom, for all the money that you see is being spent, there's...
Dennis, 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 you need to stay towards the microphone, sorry.
Okay, so I, so I'm just helping Tom and his campaign. He can come up with three hundred thousand dollars right there. So, or you could use it to offset the increase in the water rates, increase the electricity dividend. I still don't see the, and Jim, I hate to be critical, but I don't understand your project here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. To address several things, you know, bump, bump outs have been a proven benefit in traffic calming. It's a visual cue to slow down drivers. It, and it's probably more successful than speed humps, speed tables, and others. A couple other things they do is they reduce the time that a pedestrian is in a crosswalk area, because they start their, they step into the street much further out. They typically help the, the visual look for a driver that is at the stop. And yes, recognize there are some downfalls, as, as often pointed out, for every benefit, there are just things that are detrimental. The, you know, certainly for bicyclists, and I am a bicyclist myself, you often have to come out in traffic. But typically, we put most of our bump outs in areas where either the, the road is wider than it normally would, would be, or there's typically cars being parked in the road. And so, this is an extra benefit, because now it's putting the pedestrian in equal footing, so to speak, with the parked car, so they can see both ways. One of the great benefits we have seen, especially close to schools, and this relates to the Britton Street one, is that when the crossing guard has been in the crosswalk stopping traffic coming along Greenwood, before the bump out, we'd have someone not seeing the crossing guard try to pass on the right and then quickly come up on there. A bump out has prevented that from happening. And there's lessons learned as you put bump outs in. If you, if you notice, the turning radiuses on the Greenwood bump outs is far better than the turn, turning radiuses on the Prospect one. The Prospect, Prospect ones, I will admit, and our engineer would probably admit, the turning radiuses were not done properly, and at some point, that will probably be corrected. Certainly, when I, I live on Britton, so I have to deal with a bump out on a regular basis, and it is far easier compared to my days of driving home from the Y when I had to deal with the one at Keep Street. These bump outs, Hillside and Green Avenue, especially because Green Avenue is wider than it should be, and you have the hump right near Woodland has been one of the high accident areas, and of course, the Wilmer at, at the lower end is a very busy crossing guard area. So, these will, will have benefits, and refresh my memory on how much is coming from state aid?
One fifty.
One fifty. So, fifty percent of it. So, hopefully, that helps, helps you understand the benefits. Any other, any, any other comments on any topics?
Claire Whitcomb, twelve Fairwood Road. I'm just really thrilled that Deb Ellis drove all the way from Montclair to come to talk about the resolution from the Native Plant Society to save the Drew Forest, and I, we, the, the Friends of the Drew Forest and the environmental groups that are, that are participating in it have had just such a gratifying string of support from state and local environmental groups. The Great Swamp also passed a resolution recently that was very strong, and just on Sunday, the Environmental Commission received a letter of support from the Passaic River Coalition, which is a hugely important group to weigh in on this situation. The Passaic River Coalition is an environmental organization that focuses on improving water quality and protecting water supplies in northern New Jersey. And in nineteen eighty-six, they provided a report on the aquifer. This was just only fourteen years after their founding. That was really seminal. It led to federal designation of the Burried Valley Aquifer as a sole-source aquifer, which means that the aquifer supplies more than fifty percent of the water, drinking water for the thirty-one towns that depend on it. And four towns, Madison Forum Park, East Hanover, and Channen Borough, get a hundred percent of their water from the Buried Valley Aquifer. And as we know, forests are really effective conduits of water conservation and aquifer recharge. And this is exceptionally important, because water levels in Madison's wells have dropped roughly twenty to twenty-five feet from the late fifties and the nineteen sixties when these wells, the five wells we have in town, were built. And there are several things happening that we, no one imagined in nineteen fifty-seven, and the first is the paving over of the town, and the second, we all witness today, the rain is fast and furious. And we are, New Jersey is experiencing too much rain followed by flash droughts. I mean, my pollinator plants are, I, I've had to water things I haven't had to water ever. So, when flash, or when heavy rainfall has happened, the water is not purified by the ground gravel and sand of the aquifer. The whole seeping down a hundred and fifty feet to the, to the water table or wherever it is in the particular geology of the town is a purification system that is valued at one point five million dollars annually by the DEP. So, Lori Howard, the executive director of the Passaic River Coalition, includes in her letter the following. Drew's far, Drew Forest's ecology with its mature trees, some of the oldest in Morris County, trails, wildlife habitat, wetlands, and forests greatly contributes to replenishing the Buried Valley Aquifer.
One minute.
Clearly, for many years, the Drew Forest quietly provided incredible environmental value to the watershed of the university and surrounding communities. Now, as we face climate changes and too many economic pressures for development, its value to our environmental well-being has increased exponentially, and its preservation is ever more critical. These precious lands, known as the Drew Forest, deserve continued preservation and stewardship and an immediate and resolute finality to development considerations of any kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Tom?
I am definitely being redundant up here, huh, mayor? Is that all right? I'll let you go home soon. So, two things I probably want to come, well, first thing I want to comment on is, so, Tom Howland-Putus, twenty-seven Palmroy Road, Madison. I, I want to also commend Deb Ellis for her presentation. I wish we would just give her more time, because I think she could have enlightened us with a lot more facts on the species that are being affected in our state and nationally and maybe globally. The, the number three billion birds lost in the last twenty years or whatever it was, fifty years, is just staggering. It's really sad. So, we can make a difference, and Rachel's Climate Action Committee is going to help us hopefully clean up our own little environment here. So, thank you very much for coming out tonight for that, and, and also for, for Claire's passion. She had a great op-ed in The Eagle, which is, she just gave a little brief overview of what it was about, and it's spot-on with what we have to be concerned about with the Drew Forest. So, mayor, hopefully, the inconsistencies in their suit against Madison, you can prove them wrong, and we'll, we'll maybe be able to have some collaboration there. So, another thing I wanted to ask about, mayor, is now with the Civic Center leaving the borough and becoming a new affordable housing complex, state-of-the-art, green complex, we, as of right now, don't have any place for our seniors. And I've been approached a few times, quite a few times now, because I see people being around where I am in town, and they're just asking me if I know what is the plan in the future. The current option that they're offered is, is not nothing, but it's not really, really indicative of what we owe the seniors. We had a really nice senior center before. It was very nice appropriated inside from, you know, over the course of the year, it was used by enough seniors that we should be considerate of the fact that we need to put one back. need to put one back and at least to mention it sometime in the near future to give them some hope that they'll have a place to go again. And maybe there'll be more seniors if you make a place that's even nicer than before. So there's a lot of options to consider. I brought some to your attention, you know, and during our, some of our discussions. So, so something for the council to consider because that's an important part of the, of the population in Madison. And then, um, the other, uh, thing I wanted to comment on, which I, I know is a project that's in the works, is about pickleball courts in town. Uh, I've discussed it with Claire the other day and with Jim multiple times and you, and I'm really just a supporter. Uh, I'm a player, but a very casual player. My wife is more active with her friends and there's hundreds of people in town. So one of our residents, his name is Tom Howey, along with other people who have been writing to, to you and, uh, some of your administration and council, just commenting on their, their desire to see the borough, just embrace this option for adult recreation. We don't have that much adult recreation in town. We have a lot of walking and we have some biking, but we don't have that much. Uh, one minute. Okay. I'm going to talk really fast. So, so one thing that Tom commented on was a little incident at the tennis courts where, you know, a lot of residents go and they share the tennis courts with pickle players. And he commented on one night when, uh, he was playing next to a couple of gentlemen who thought they were playing Nadal versus Federer and his pickle group were the Three Stooges plus him and just having, just nice banter and they were just, um, having a little conflict with the tennis players. And that could happen, but if we had our own facility, whenever it happens, which should happen sooner or later, uh, that would, that would obviously not, not be a situation that could come up. So, so Tom's comments, he said here, um, another, that's an example of how we need dedicated pickleball courts in Madison. I know that many of our surrounding towns are building or have built dedicated courts. Since I am in the pickle demographic, as many of you in this distribution are commenting on everybody he emailed this to, I can definitively say that the courts will be used. In my experience, as we age, we need to find more physical outlets for our aging citizenry. As for me, I'm a semi-retirement state and now that the kids are out of, out of the house, I don't have another place that I want to move to. I love Madison and I see myself living here for the foreseeable future.
And the time.
One more thing. Pickle is so social and many believe the sport of the future for our demographic, so we should probably try to embrace it and continue to make Madison one of the best towns in the Northeast that includes a pickleball facility. Okay?
Thank you.
Now, I'm done for the evening.
So a couple of, uh, comments. It's, uh, very clear that pickleball is amazing how over, you know, you know, it's been around for, actually been around for decades if people don't know, but it's just been a recent phenomenon where it is, uh, in a way seems to escape Florida and taken the nation by, um, surprise. As a lifelong person with a career in recreation, it's, um, I wouldn't necessarily compare it to racquetball because it, it, but, you know, similar way that racquetball grew so fast, um, and you don't know which trajectory it, it takes. Racquetball grew and then faded away. Pickleball is, is a much different sport. That last time I played racquetball, my knee told me it's too, you shouldn't be playing anymore. But pickleball is a different story. Um, we will be, you'll be hearing more in the near future about, uh, expansion of, you know, pickleball and basketball facilities. That will be coming, coming up. Um, the, uh, you know, dedicated courts is, uh, we've seen those in a few towns. It is a, you know, Madison has done very well with recreation facilities, but it is one of those things that a, a four square mile town versus, for example, one of the municipalities nearby that has dedicated courts, 16 square miles, the ability to convert tennis courts when you have other locations. Uh, Tom Howey's comments around, you know, I, I was listening to a program on NPR last week on pickleball and the, um, the speaker who, um, who wrote about pickleball, The New Yorker was talking about that dynamic between tennis players and pickleball players because that is where most of the courts have come from is a shared, um, um, facility. Shared facilities work well until it doesn't work and so it's, it is one of those dynamics. So, so it is all, we recognize pickleball is, uh, here to stay and we will continue to look at it. Senior programs, um, as you know, in a meeting a few months ago, we entered an agreement with the Senior Center of the Chatham's, which is a nonprofit, uh, that has been running senior programs for both the Chatham's and now is providing programs for Madison. Right now, the, the programs for the most part, part are in, um, the facility on Myersville Road. The contract calls for expansion of our payments to them as they provide satellite programs right here in Madison. Actually, programs that would be more convenient for Chatham Borough residents than the Myersville site. So I think, uh, we will see that shortly. Also, we entered an agreement with the, um, Masons related to the preservation of, um, the beautiful building they are, the, um, former Presbyterian Church. And part of that plan is to use that space for senior programming. Most people have not seen that space, but, um, that is actually a, the better programming space than what we had on, um, um, on Walnut Street. So, and one other thing to keep in mind with senior programming is the idea that one space, one center fits all is not necessarily the model. The Chatham Seniors Center has, you know, it's a former school, so the fact they have a full-size gymnasium and all the classrooms is a very rare thing. But, uh, senior programs can range from mahjong to pickleball and you're not going to necessarily get those, all those in one location. So having programs that are managed but are run in the most appropriate spaces is, is the direction to go. So it could be at, at the Mason, at the Sonic Lodge. It could be at the Community Arts Center. It could be a collaboration with the Y. It could be out in Myersville, you know, all sorts of options. So that, we will continue as, um, the seniors, uh, enjoy those programs and we want to continue to deliver those. Anyone else wishing to make a comment?
Suzanne Schreiber, Greenwich Court. Um, two things. One, I wanted to, um, just say I'm a huge supporter of Save the Drew Forest, um, as many are, and I can't think of anything more green we could possibly do as a town than Save the Drew Forest. Um, on another note, I do talk to many people in the course of a week and, um, there's a lot of us that are concerned that the, um, Climate Action Committee is taking a very aggressive approach, uh, on pursuing some of the more immature energy resources that we have, the solar panels, the electric vehicles to replace our, um, DPW vehicles. Uh, and I just want to be sure that we're looking at both science, but we're also facing economics and we're looking at years out and not just a short period of time where it seems like, okay, let's do this, it's a good thing. There's a lot of concern about, about what the plan is. There's numbers being thrown around, $100,000 savings in fuel. Well, you know, let's look at all the costs associated with that from beginning, battery replacement, battery disposal, solar panel disposal. Um, so just concerned and look forward to the next recap and report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Rachel will certainly take that back, but it is, their commitment and their plan is not, not for just tomorrow, but for the long range and that will be, uh, the, the model to be driven by. And, um, as is stated that if you don't act, if you don't act locally, the impact will certainly be globally. Any other, uh, comments? Uh, oh, oh, sorry, can't.
Oh, I can't.
Yep, sorry. Yeah, it's a, a single, single comment, but, uh, yeah, certainly share, save it for the next meeting or send us an email. Anyone else wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and we move on to the introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for August the 8th, 2022. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask for Clerk, Borough Clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance 40-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $300,000 from the General Capital.
25.
Excuse me, yes. My bad.
Mayor, I move ordinance.
Slow down.
Start again. Ordinance 40, 2022. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $455,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Madison Public Library Roof Restoration Project.
Sorry for jumping the gun. Mayor, I move ordinance 40-2022.
Council discussion? And this is a key project that will be done before, the, the library obviously is having a major project that is being funded through the state bond, but, um, it's tough to take care of things below the roof until the roof above is taken care of. For a discussion, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Ordinance 41-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $300,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Green Avenue Pedestrian Safety Project.
Mayor, I move ordinance 41-2022.
Second.
Council discussion?
I just want to add a little context, uh, with regard to the Green Avenue Pedestrian Safety Project. And that is to say that last year was the deadliest year since 1989 for pedestrians and bicyclists on New Jersey's roads. So I think it behooves, uh, our Complete Streets Committee, our Borough Engineer and our council to look at ways that we can, uh, fight this alarming trend towards pedestrian deaths by improving safety for pedestrians in our town.
Thank you. Any further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 42-2022.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance 25, 2022, appropriating $15,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the replacement of hydraulic hoses and repairs to the fire truck ladder, the fire department ladder truck to increase the appropriation from $65,000 to $80,000.
Mayor, I move ordinance 42-2022.
Second.
Council discussion? Pretty straightforward as the title reflects the fact, increased cost. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move resolution 177-2022 to resolution 211-2022.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
Thankfully, there is no unfinished business because we have plenty of business as it is. We'll move on to approval of the vouchers.
Just a question, Mayor. I have one, one, one question. I got a late notice from the, from the President of our liaison for the Health Department. He's got two items. Can I?
Okay, we, that, that sounds like unfinished business, so.
Okay, fine. He says, "A reminder that residents six months and older are eligible for COVID-19 vaccine. Atlantic Health and the Essex County site at the Livingston Mall remain good options for Madison residents." The Health, excuse me, one second. The Health Department, uh, is also followers, following the unfolding monkeypox situation in our area. As of Friday, no known cases have been occurred in Madison. For more information, residents are encouraged to visit cdc.gov or the New Jersey Department of Health websites.
Thank you very much. That's all right. Important information to be shared. Okay, we will now move on to approval of vouchers. Will the clerk please read the voucher totals?
From the current fund, $8,846,249.80. From the General Capital Fund, $216,403.30. From the Electric Operating Fund, $1,191,942.30. And from the Electric Capital Fund, $27,835.38. From the Water Operating Fund, $82,825.17. And from the trusts, $66,747.42. The total is $10,431,603.83.
Can I have a motion for approval of vouchers?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Hurlick?
Yes.
All right, under new business, I'd like to, uh, make, uh, several appointments. First one is Complete Street Committee, Kathy Cacavale, as a sustainable Madison member through a one-year term through, uh, December 31st, 2022. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this next one, because every time we do something with a alternate, it, there's a, a whole lot of shuffling going on. So zoning board of adjustment to, uh, Christine Terratilli, to, from alternate one to regular member, unexpired four-year term through December 31st, 2022. Catherine Ransom-Siliman, from alternate number two to alternate number one, unexpired two-year term through December 31st, 2023. And Stephen Sherman, a new appointment as alternate number two to unexpired two-year term, uh, this was resignation of Fitzsimmons, uh, through December 31st, 2022. Can I have a motion to accept these three?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess Rachel, it falls back on you now.
Okay. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Excellent.